Fine, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the planning commission meeting for Northumberland County to order February Call to order, let's have a roll call, Stuart.
Yes, sir. Chris Crowley, he mentioned he was not feeling well, so he's probably not going to make it today. Patrick O'Brien.
Here.
John Cost told me he would be out of town. Vivian Diggs.
Here.
Garfield Parker.
Here.
Alan Garland.
Here.
Roger McKinley.
Here.
Charles Williams.
Here.
And Ms. Wilkins-Cory, I believe, is on line, but I'll call her name and we'll do the remote participation policy here. If you recall, we passed a remote participation policy at January meeting, and it requires us to have a quorum, which we do have, with six people, and it's up to you all if you all would like to allow Ms. Wilkins-Cory to participate remotely.
So moved.
Second.
Is she on? Okay.
I am.
Fine, fine, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. To our invocation and our pleasure of allegiance, if you would bow for just a moment, Father, I thank you this day for allowing us another opportunity to serve our community. Thank you, Lord, for another opportunity to just living in this area. You've been asked now that you've guided and directed our path, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's do our pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. You have your agenda.
The movement agenda has been approved.
Motion for agenda and second. It's already the second, all in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry, who's second?
Mr. Garland.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're looking for the approval of minutes from the January 16th meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any commissioners have any comments on anything that's been going on in our community in the last month? Any comments? Staff, do you have, Stuart, do you have anything?
Other than the capital improvement, subcommittee will be meeting hopefully next week, that's about it, and I believe we do have a conditional use for next month as well.
Okay.
That's in the hopper.
Fine. Does any citizen have anything other than not our public hearing tonight? Do you have anything else? All right. Glad to see everything's going well in Northumberland.
You are on the tablet for the public?
Yes. It's on the screen, ma'am. If you want a paper copy, I can give you the paper copy.
I'm eight years old. I haven't seen the screen. I'm sixty.
Anybody else like one?
Yeah, she would get it.
Okay, no citizen have any comments? Just like the go on rapid saying that I bet you won't complain about weather anymore for a while. That's what we've had this last few weeks, all right? Stuart, can we go to a public hearing?
Yes, sir. Let me go get the sign engaged, and then we can start. So, this public hearing is for a request by Kevin L. Brown, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a multi-unit dwelling on property zone A1 agriculture. The property as shown is tax map parcel six, double circle one, lot five, sub lot H, and is located on Lone Walnut Road.
Mr. Brown, is Mr. Brown here tonight?
Right.
Fine, would you like to have something to say here?
Uh, I couldn't bear for it, but I...
Could you step up to the microphone, sir?
Yeah, just thank you guys for seeing me, having me here. I'm just wanted to mention, I'm just here to try to better the community here. I own the property at 25 Lone Walnut, and I was able to put a few people in there, and there seems to be a larger demand, so trying to just help out where I can, and I also have another property in the community, a duplex that I'm closing on next week. So, I saw that there, as I was working with the Housing Administration down here in North umberland, trying to assist there, and one of the recommendations is if I had any more to kind of reach out to her. So, saw our opportunity here where the land was available, and decided to attempt to build more units so that more individuals have housing.
Is this a separate parcel from where the current apartments are?
It is.
Okay.
No, if you just hold for a moment, okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any, any commissioners have any questions to Mr. Brown? All right.
I'll find my...
Yes.
Mr. Brown, on the application, there's a sheet for whether you've notified your neighbors?
Yes.
And with one exception, none of them were notified, according to the application. Is that correct?
Ah, yeah, I think you may be correct.
The one that was, was also Kevin Brown.
Yeah, I thought that, I guess when this is sent out, I was talking to Mr. Marston on the Board of Supervisor, a little kind of walking through this, this is my first time doing so, and I know he said the list is what I can, and try to put there, this when we had this meeting, notices would go out to all the impacted individuals.
So, in terms of notifying the neighbors, you...
Correct, I didn't send out anything personally.
Good, okay. And then, secondly, on the conditional use application, you reference parking spaces, four units, three bedrooms each. You reference parking for these units, but it doesn't appear on the diagram of your tax parcel, which is, I believe, the second or third to last page of the application.
Well, that would be my mistake, this is me, I put this all together, it's the first time I've done so, trying to push this through to get, to make things happen, so I can update that to reflect parking, but I wasn't aware.
Where is the parking going to be?
It would be directly in the front of the unit.
Would you amend your application and send it with the cracked version to building its own?
Yeah, whatever's needed.
Well, I think we need some diagram that shows the parking spaces.
Okay.
And those are all the questions I have.
That unit would be larger than the one, the existing unit that we've got now?
Yeah, it's about...
It's a duplex, you say?
Yeah, it's about forty, no, 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 sorry.
The existing one's a duplex?
No, it's a quad, it has four.
Okay. All right. And how large is the proposed one going to be?
The proposed one would be about forty feet longer, or wider than the current one. The current one's about a hundred feet, and this one's coming in at a hundred and forty.
And that's what is, that faces Gibion Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And yours faces Lone Walnut?
On Lone Walnut.
And how many units would be in that building?
There'll be four units.
Four, just like the other one?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing now, and the first person I have on here is Mr. Robert Worth.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Do I...
Yes, if you would come up with...
Stand up and speak in the microphone.
State your name and address.
My name is Robert Worth, I live at 2435 Gibion Road, right across the street from the proposed parcel development.
Okay.
All right, do you want me to read my statement?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Bear with me, I'm not a, I'm nervous.
I'm nervous also.
All right, my name is Robert Worth, and I respectfully submitting this letter in opposition to the proposed multifamily dwelling units on Lone Walnut Road in Calio, the tax map parcel you have already. There already exists a multifamily dwelling unit on the corner of Lone Walnut, the intersection of Gibion Road, Route 600. The proposed application parcel is adjacent to the existing unit, forming a two-acre block per se. The current complex has four units, each having two bedrooms. Under normal circumstances, I think it would be safe to say that each unit has a reasonable potential of two parents and two children, four people per apartment times four apartments would equal about sixteen occupants per acre. Lone Walnut and the surrounding area is currently a single-family residential area. Most homes are located on one acre, and a few are on multi-acre lots. By and large, these homes are occupied by fewer than five people per home, but for argument's sake, let's say five is the number of occupants per acre. That makes the potential number of occupants living in the existing apartments, three times the number of inflated single-family occupants per acre. Sixteen persons per acre in the existing multi-unit as proposed to five acre in a single-family house, a home. This not, does not appear to even remotely match the existing person-per-acre dynamic. The current proposal, under discussion, asks for four apartments with three bedrooms each. Again, a possible, uh, okay, I'm just shaking, that's all right. Again, a possible reasonable estimate might be five to six people, two parents and potentially three to four children per unit. Five people per unit times four unit would be twenty people on one acre. The two adjacent parcels combined could potentially be thirty-six people on two acres. This number does not include guests, relatives, or social events. My feeling is this does not properly represent the existing population density of our area, or in fact, anywhere that I'm aware of in Northumberland County. It's not my intention to do harm to Mr. Brown or his investing, but I think this proposal has not fully grasped the unique quality of the life in the northern neck, or North umberland County, that our supervisors have worked so hard to maintain. It's my hope that the supervisors will continue to do so. I'm also concerned that an additional multifamily dwelling would have a negative impact on property value and resale aspects. The number of potential home purchases would be severely narrowed for those homes in the immediate proximity as well as those located anywhere along Lone Walnut, less than a mile in length. At the very least, the asking prices for the homes for sale would almost assuredly be lowered to compensate for the dwellings, which many might be perceived as being out of place with regard to the uniqueness and rural of our agricultural lives. While there have been some concerns about law enforcement at the existing units in the past, one cannot predict the future and have little value here. In the existing homes on Lone Walnut and the surrounding area, from Village to Wilbert's Corner and Slash in the middle, live people who have resided here for many years, in many cases, multi-generational. They're friendly, they're polite, we share the same values and are respectful of each other. We lend a hand when it's needed, and other times recognize one's need for privacy. It's a concern that those with no true roots in the community might not be aware of the uniqueness and the fragility of the community and the cause, however unintentionally, harm. In closing, I wish, to reiterate my previous statement, I wish the application no harm, but I think the placement of the multi-twelling dwelling, multi-unit dwelling, might be better suited to an area more highly developed with more viable access to services and transportation. Thank you.
Just a minute.
Sure.
Question. Questions from the... Thank you, thank you. Next, I have Melissa Lewis. Hi.
My name's Melissa Lewis, I live at 1150 Lone Walnut.
You pull your mic up so we can hear you.
Is that good?
Yeah. Thank you.
I live at 1150 Lone Walnut, which is at the very end of it. I own like twenty-some acres down there, the very end. When the first apartments went in, we were never notified that those apartments were going in. We were not notified that these apartments were going to be built, units or whatever they're calling them. And we feel like, you know, we should have been notified about that, and because this impacts every person that lives on that road. We know what has gone on with the first apartments, you know. It's better now, but it, there was a lot of law enforcement and all of this at the beginning of that road. When we first bought our land, we built our property, built our home in ninety-seven. We have had no problems down on that road, none. And then, when the apartments came, things started happening, and we didn't, you know, we noticed that at the beginning of the road where the apartments were, there's stuff was going on that was not quite, should have been. And we just like our peaceful little life down there, like everyone down there knows everyone, we're all good, and can you imagine thirty-some people in one little corner at the beginning of Lone Walnut? I don't know if y'all know where that is, but it is a very small place. That's basically, we just want to keep it like it is, where we know everyone, everything is safe, your kids can play, you know, we're not fearing that someone, something's going to happen. So, that's just how we feel. And I'm not trying to stop Mr. Brown from furthering his adventures or, you know, whatever, it just feels like that is not the spot for it to be. Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis, your name doesn't appear on the contact list.
No, it didn't, no.
That may explain why you didn't get notice of this.
Yeah, we did not get notice of this, or the first one. The first one just appeared, we, everyone that lived down there thought that was just a home being built.
She's not an adjoining property?
No, I'm a little farther down the road. I'm on the same road, but at the end.
The notices go out to adjoining property owners, that's probably why you didn't...
If you share a property line and you're notified.
Okay. Yeah, we still have to drive past it to get down there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Martha Lamb.
Good evening, I'm Martha Lamb, I live on Gibion, but I am on the right corner of the first apartment. So, we're just adjacent, we have five acres, and the apartments that they're planning when the property went for sale, we assumed it was going to be a single-family home. Then we get a notice that it's going to be four units, three bedrooms, and we live, we moved here eighteen years ago, and it's, they said it was peaceful living, and that's how it's been. We haven't been here long enough to have remembered the problems on the corner unit, but there are sometimes, you know, evictions, to say the least, where the police are there to escort people out that aren't paying rent, or for what, I don't know what the reasons are. But this property is going to be facing mine, right there. I have to get the mail, I got to go out my gate, and the parking's going to be here. I don't know how many parking spots it is going to be there, and it's just going to be people driving in, driving out. I have a barn, my husband just put up doors, because we have different trailers, cars, whatever, and now it's secure, and I'm glad we did it, because if this goes up, that's all we'd be, it's not facing our property, it's facing Lone Walnut. So, we have five acres, and there are only two of us living in the house, and I think it's very unfair to the people at the end of Lone Walnut, even though they're not right in the vicinity, if they go to sell their house, well, you have to come down Lone Walnut, you're going to see the first apartment right there, four units, make a left or a right, and here's another apartment building. Those people, they're going to go look at a house, right away, they're going to say, "I don't think so, I don't plan on..." Because they're only going to think the same thing I'm going to think, is, okay, you got one, now you got two, how many more are going to go along the whole road down to the next house? And there's very few people that live in each house down there, so this is a lot of people. And I don't know if anybody has driven by Calio, there's not much going on. We don't even have a supermarket anymore. There's no fast food restaurants, there's really no facilities, I mean, it's, you know, people usually now go to Warsaw for anything that they need, and for us even drive to here, to go to Food Lion, or our post office, because we get important mail here, because of fear of where our mailbox is, we don't want anything stolen out of it. Because it's on, I don't know why, it was there, it's facing Lone Walnut. So, that's got to be moved, so I don't know if I'll have to come back here to get permission to move my mailbox to Gibion Road where our driveway goes in, instead of on Lone Walnut. A very selfish reason also is three months, four months out of the year, depending on our summers, I have a twenty-by-forty swimming pool, and it's right on the other side of our fence. So, there goes my privacy. I tell my husband, I said, "I don't want to live here, I don't want to live here anymore, this is what's going to happen in the future. We planned on dying here. We bought the brand Home Place. We met them, they came over, they loved what we did to the house, we put a lot of money into it. We're still putting money into it. We maintain it, we planted, my husband planted beautiful bushes, you know, to seclude ourselves to have privacy, and this is just going to be a real, I don't know. My sister-in-law is right there. She was not notified. She lives two houses behind us on Lone Walnut. Two houses behind, we have five acres, she has an acre, and there's a house in between. She was not notified. That, I don't find that acceptable, and that's why nobody's here. That's why nobody's here. But anybody who lives on Lone Walnut, who wants to sell their property, and our price, our property value has gone up, if, we just looked at Zillow or whatever, and it finally, it finally rose somewhat, you know what I mean? Not that we're looking for that, but it's nice to know it's worth something better than when we were, got it eighteen years ago. But everybody going down that road is going to see that it's just going to be a totally different community. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at you, I just have to focus, I just have to focus, because I can't, I can't keep going like this, because then I'll confuse...
Just fill the point.
I'm not...
Good call, he's the chairman.
And as for your turn, no, I'm only kidding. No, I just, I just think it's unfair to put two, because it's an exact same one, further down Heathville, it's exactly the same type of building, you know, two, four units, two bedrooms. It's exactly like the one that is on the corner where we are. Now, this one's going to have three bedrooms, I don't even care if it's two bedroom, goes down to two bedrooms, it's still, it doesn't go with our community. It's all farms, it's quiet, you hear birds, you know, that's all I hear, birds during the summer. I hardly hear a car coming up Lone Walnut, or going up Gibion Road. I'll say that to my husband while we're sitting out there having a cocktail, you know, it's been a half hour, I haven't even heard a car. I have no idea what I'm going to be hearing, I really don't, I just, just know it's going to be a distraction to my life. My, I'm retired, so it's not like I'm out all day. I hardly ever go out, I don't want to leave my property, I love it, and I love the way it is. It's peaceful living, and that's what I really want to keep and save for my future family, who might want to take over that house when we're gone. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Listening ears.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Marston a question? Given the impact that this has on this private road, would it not have been prudent to notify all of the homeowners on this road, instead of just those that were adjacent? Since they're, all are impacted by the construction of this building, it seems like to me that it would have been better to notify all of the homeowners, I don't know how long this road is, but it couldn't have been that much more. That's just a question.
I mean, I feel like if, if, any precedent may you for a conditional use permit to contact all property owners on the roads adjacent to a project applying for a conditional use permit, it is going to be, I think it's a lot. I will say that there were some discrepancies in our map when our notifications did go out with the adjoining property owners. That has since been fixed, and I'm glad that they were able to be notified and came into the office so that we could fix our notifications. But, at the same point, we do, we contact those that join the project, we put a pending zoning action sign where the project is proposed.
Sign is there.
Yes, sir.
If you're only separated by a road, is that considered adjoining enough to be contacted?
We contact across the...
Across the street, okay.
Excuse me. This lady here, where she lives at, her housing, no problem, that door, she was not contacted.
Okay, we'll give, we're going to give her a chance to...
I see that's one voice.
Okay.
Ma'am, what was it, what was your name?
Martha.
I'm looking, I like to look on OnX, the map, to see where everybody lives, when they, when they, just to see, okay.
2435.
Got you, yep, I see it. I was just, I saw the one with the swimming pool, I figured that was it.
She's the two-story old farmhouse owner.
Yeah, right on the corner.
Right.
Okay.
Ma'am, may I speak with you?
He is, ma'am, go ahead.
The brand one.
Do I have to go back up?
Sure, come on back up.
Yeah.
There was no sign on the property until very, very late, and it just said zoning meeting. It didn't say anything about what was proposed to be put there. So, I personally made a sign to notify everybody who comes up Lone Walnut Apartments, four, four units, three bedrooms each, so that the people down the road coming up would know what's being planned to be put there, because nobody down the street was notified. what's being planned to be put there, because nobody down the street was notified. And I had something else to say. Oh, I also went around and put in people's mailboxes what we got, because nobody, my sister-in-law said she never got anything. And she is two houses behind us. My mother-in-law was behind us, but she passed away, you know? So I don't know why, why just a small handful of people, but it didn't say what was proposed to go on that property. These people had absolutely no idea.
Okay. Let's hear from Susan.
Let's think. Get in the fire.
Well, to get you on record.
Hi, my name is Susan Awe. I, my last name is spelled A-W-E. I live at 142 Lone Walnut Road. I've been there for thirteen years. As Martha said, my mother, Martha is on the corner, she's got the big piece of property on the corner. Then there's an easement that goes up behind us, that goes to another house. Then there's a one-acre lot that my mother was able to purchase. When I retired, my mother built a one-family house there. She built a single-family house. When I retired with my husband, we decided that we wanted to move to Virginia. We had been here to visit my brother and my mom, and we decided it was really a lovely place, and we wanted to retire here. So we contacted, well, we looked around, we looked in Heathsville, we looked in a few different places, to find a piece of property that we could purchase. And when we did find something that was actually located in Heathsville, we made contact with Mr. Van Landingham, who was handling that piece of property. And his comment was, "Well, why don't you want to live next to your mama?" And I said, "I'd love to live next to my mama, but, you know, I didn't think that property was for sale." Turned out Mr. Van Landingham owned that property, so he sold me that acre lot next to my mom. And I believe that I'm the last house that was built on Lone Walnut Road, and that was thirteen years ago. For me, coming from Long Island, New York, it was a very different experience. I lived in what I refer to as the land of quarter acres, where properties are right next to one another, and, you know, if you don't have kids, or if you aren't the same religion, or if you don't work, you really don't get to know your neighbors. And, but it's busy, 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 noisy, 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 just, you know, it makes you shudder sometimes. Here, Lone Walnut Road is a combination of old agricultural fields interspersed with single-family residences on usually one-acre lots. It's a serene, beautiful, calm, just a beautiful neighborhood. When I lost my husband four years ago, people that I didn't know that lived in the neighborhood stopped and paid condolences, or offered to help, or, you know, it was just such a neighborly thing to do, and something that I was not, hadn't experienced in New York. So anyway, when I found out that another complex was being put there, it just amazed me that we were going to try and put another four-unit complex with three bedrooms this time, on a single acre again, and we were going to have to accommodate all of the, all of the parking, and the driveway, and the traffic, and everything else that was going to be associated with it. I would assume, in this day and age, that most families have two cars, or they have a truck and a car, or two trucks, you know, they've got, so we're not talking just four parking spaces in front of these apartments, we're talking more than that. We're talking additional traffic. It's a tough corner, because there's a hill to the left as you're pulling out of Lone Walnut. And there have been accidents on that corner, because people are trying to pull out too fast when the cars are coming up the hill. But it just seems to me that people have worked so hard to build this community, and when people, when they're going to be trying to sell their homes, people are going to, potential buyers are going to come in the road, and they're going to see an apartment complex on the corner, and then they're going to come in and they're going to see another apartment complex. And it's like, okay, we've already got our one, but why do we have to have two? Isn't there someplace else that could be used for that purpose? You know, we're not close to schools. The nearest school is, is past Heathsville. You know, there's no shopping. As Martha said, the stores have closed, they've taken the, the little food store that we had, that's gone. We have a post office, we have, you know, a couple of gas stations. What? And a liquor store, yeah, right. But, I mean, we don't, it's, it's not a community, in terms of services, it's not a community that would draw people to it. You know, there's no shopping, you know, I have to drive an hour and a half to get to Richmond if I want to buy a dress. You know, it's, it's just, it just doesn't seem like the kind of place where people would rent an apartment to try to put down roots. I, I just, I, I just, I, you know, I'm here thirteen years. I feel bad for the people who have been here so many more years than that, who've, you know, grown up here, their kids have grown up here, they have grandchildren here. So that's, that's really what I have to say. I do have one question for the potential construction gentleman. For you, please. Can you tell, am I allowed to ask?
I prefer you just address this commission right now.
Okay. The question that I have, that perhaps you can provide an answer to, is where the duplex is that the gentleman is interested, or is in the process of purchasing? Just for my own curiosity.
Where?
Where, the gentleman indicated, when he made his remarks, that he was in the process of closing on a duplex in the area, and I'm just curious where that duplex is.
Okay, I thought he was just talking about just the...
Well, I'm just, I would have asked it apart from this, but I understood that I had to ask it when I came up here to speak to you. And again, I looked at you the whole time, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
I put a few of these out, guys.
Do you have any idea how many single-family residences are on Walnut Road?
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. Wow, thank you very much.
The road is about a mile long, it, it dead ends.
But all of those are in Northumberland County?
Excuse me?
I said, I don't believe all of those are in Northumberland County.
You're correct.
The Westmoreland County boundary splits it in half.
You're correct.
But there's still residents on that road.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they have to go through Northumberland to get to Westmoreland.
I see, okay.
Yes, yes, and the road dead ends.
Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Patty.
I just have one thing to say. And I really didn't know...
Come on, come on up to the mic.
I'm halfway deaf, so I talk real loud.
Did you give me your name?
Excuse me, Patsy Self, I live in Village Calio. Okay. Fourteen seven seven five Richmond Road. Many years ago, my kids and I, we used to go to Lone Walnut Road and Slay Ride. I loved Walnut Road. I loved it, because it was just so country and so forth, and you could go through Lone Walnut and come out at Haynesville, and I loved that, because we could get to Haynesville to the store and get things. But the State Highway Department closed that road off, didn't ask me if they could do it either. To, to cut down on traffic. So if, if you're going to put a lot of traffic on Lone Walnut Road, you think they're going to open that road up again?
They can.
Huh?
You own that.
You own that now, okay. But they, they closed it so that they could stop some of the traffic, so. But anyway.
And is, is this complex coming out on Lone Walnut, or is it coming out on Gibbion?
Lone Walnut. Lone Walnut.
It's coming out on Lone Walnut.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Michael.
I'm Michael Brand.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I didn't speak, because I already sent an email earlier.
Yes, sir.
I didn't speak when I signed.
Well, we love to hear you.
Okay, you always, no, you don't. I'm scared to death in front of people. No, I've lived down there since nineteen seventy-four, so I'm proud.
Give me your name, first name, last name.
Michael Brand. I've lived down there since nineteen seventy-four, and far as I know, it's twenty-six houses down there. And referring to the subject she was talking about, the road, my grandfather used to have the road that went through there, so state had nothing to do with it when the road washed out in ninety-seven, that everybody couldn't go through it no more. But putting apartments up there, I just feel that if you put apartments up there, we've had some issues, just like other people who are still up here and said about crime and stuff. And I actually talked to one of my other neighbors, and she said some, one time, a few years ago, she actually had a drug dealer sitting right in her driveway, and she said, "You get the heck out of here." So, and I know, I don't know if I'm putting Todd on the spot, but I know one time they had somebody on their property who was doing something, and they told him, "Get off." So it's not, sometimes things are good and sometimes are bad, but the more areas you bring of apartments, I've looked up a little bit, I'm not a great orator or nothing, but they bring crime to the area, and just like everybody else was saying, that it's going to lower our value of property. So that's not going to help either. And when you've dealt, been there for fifty-some years, it's like, you change it, and I guess, I guess I put people on the spot, but Mr. Brown, that just permit, I think he should have informed everybody before, even the people close, because I know a couple of people I talked to, I only found out this through the grapevine, I'll say, because some people said, "Oh, we don't know nothing about it." And in all, I know it's, I'm not, I'm a good Christian fellow and everything, but in all parts, it's like, you didn't do all your homework, it's like, if you put it there, is it legal to do it? So that's about all I can say, I don't need to ram on.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone online that would like to have something to say? Anybody else? Okay. All right. Heidi, would you, did you have anything to ask?
Not at this time, Chairman.
All right. I know we have you, Mr. Haney, you're online. Anything?
Mr. Brown, and I noticed on Appendix B of your application, if I understand your answer correctly about the, the parking spot are going to be all on Lone, Lone Walnut Road, facing Lone Walnut?
Yes.
Okay. And you've got no proposed fencing or landscaping?
Uh, no.
And there won't be any lighting?
No, just the lighting that's on the building itself, that will be in the back and the front, just like the current building.
No signs associated with the property?
Such as the address, I don't know.
Something like that.
Yeah, the address will be there, but nothing else outside of that. It's, isn't it planned?
Given what Spence said tonight, do you have any concerns about landscaping the, the part that fronts Lone Walnut Road?
Thank you guys for your comments. Yeah, I, I had a couple of comments, so that, I could definitely put fencing up, or trees up, that could kind of block some of any activity that's going on, but I just wanted to point out a little that there was a couple of references to the current building that's there, and activity that was transpiring. I've only owned the building since two, twenty twenty-three. I do a thorough background check of individuals that are going there. I don't allow there to be more than a couple of people, just for the two bedrooms, there will only be three people there at max. And this, the proposed three, I would only go with four people per unit max. And like I said, the crime, I do the background checks there, so I wouldn't be, that wouldn't, I'll do what I can to make sure that that's not a concern, or not a problem. The other thing with the, your question earlier, because I think that's why I didn't notify anyone on this conditional permit, it says to list the addresses, and they will be notified by you guys, not you, but it will be notified by whoever's looking at this. So that's why I didn't move forward with notifying anybody.
I have a question. You said the lighting is in the front and the back. Is this lighting at each unit, or is it on the property somewhere else?
It's on the, the arch of the building. There'll be two on each side that can light, that light the building, or the perimeter that's around the building.
Okay. And would you, if it was made a condition that you put some kind of shrubbery or fencing in front of the building to block it, would that be a problem?
Not a problem. Do you think that you guys need it, you feel that it'll, it'll satisfy your concerns, make you feel safer, make you feel like it's, it's not going to ruin the community? I'm definitely open to your suggestions, and we'll try to appease.
Chairman, would you like me to read the proposed suggested conditions?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, the zoning administrator came up with some draft suggested conditions. All required permits and or licenses shall be obtained from the appropriate regulatory agencies, including, but not limited to, the Virginia Department of Transportation and the Virginia Department of Health. Second suggested condition is an erosion and sediment control plan and a stormwater management plan shall be prepared and approved by all appropriate regulatory agencies. Number three, any proposed lighting shall be non-reflective and directed downward to prevent any glare on Lone Walnut Road and adjoining properties. Suggesting condition number four, there should be at least two parking spaces provided for each apartment. Suggesting condition five, non-compliance of any of these conditions shall result in this permit, could, shall result in this permit to come back before the Board of Supervisors for possible revocation. Mr. Marston, if, is Mr. Brown offering the vegetative buffer, is that, does that need to be, how do we document that, or how do we codify that, or do we add that as a suggested condition, and does the commission do that, or how do we do that, sir?
We, we can do it two ways. Either Mr. Brown could, could offer that as a proffer, or the planning commission could add that. If they chose to recommend this for approval, they could add a condition to that list.
Yeah, that's it, just the five right there. Unless the planning commission wants to add a vegetative buffer on, on the front of Lone Walnut Road. I, I don't, how do you decide whether you take the proffer or...
Let's.
Is it up to the commission to decide?
Okay, can we close the hearing portion, didn't get into that, or?
That's fine.
Fine.
As long as nobody else wants to speak.
If anybody else wants to speak. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thanks, Mr. Brown.
You know, I ain't a very good speaker, that's why I let my wife do it.
Okay.
But, uh.
Name, please.
Berkeley Todd Lewis. Anyway, y'all talking about putting a buffer in front of this building with the sub tank size that he has for all these bedrooms, size of this building and his parking, he ain't gonna have between here and that, what the judge sets for all the parking. So where's he gonna put all this scrubbing and fencing and all that stuff? You know, I mean, do the math. And like I said, that's about all I gotta say. I appreciate it.
I have a question. Mr. Brown, have, have you been given a list of these proposed conditions? And have you submitted a plan that shows that you're gonna be in compliance with all of these regulations?
This is my first time seeing the conditions.
Really?
Okay, all right, thank you.
First time he's seen the conditions.
That doesn't make sense.
Okay, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Just as a point of interest is that, fencing and bushes in front of this complex would be inconsistent with the appearance of the rest of the neighborhood. People don't have big blocks in front of their, um, their homes. Their homes are open to the public. Um, the grass comes down to the road, um, the driveway goes up on the side. So, I mean, again, it would disguise the, the facade and the parking issues of the building, but it's not gonna, it's still not gonna fit in with the rest of the essence of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Except we moved down here eighteen years ago. We've renovated five single-family homes, five, not including the one we live in, okay? We have found that we sold homes that had three bedrooms and we have a property management company. I don't know if Mr. Brown does. Property management company checks, you know, the references and collects the rent and so on and so forth. If there's a problem, we have money in an account. So if a tree gets knocked down, it's paid for, the property management hires a company to come and do it. We sold the three houses that were three-bedroom because of how many people, even though only a couple were on the lease, how many people, they moved into these homes and I never wanted to revisit them again. So the property management has to do all the painting because I go in there and I cry. I absolutely cry. They got a brand-new kitchen, soup to nuts. I mean, we found one house if we downsized in urges that we were gonna maybe move into. I couldn't even do that, knowing what they have done, had done to that house. So I'm just saying, a property management company and a single-family house, you can get five bedrooms in there. You know what I mean? You're not gonna get as much for the house because it's right next to the apartments, which is probably why it's more important for Mr. Brown to put an apartment building because it's more money, you know, monthly. So when I saw all the stones and I assumed it was gonna be a one-family house, I didn't even get excited about that. I thought, actually, I got excited thinking, "Ah, it's a colonial, the hunting upstairs, they can maybe see into my yard." You know, that's all I care about, but then I'm like, so what? It's a single-family home and they'll take care of the property. These people are not gonna take care of the property. And I know it's not, I'm assuming it's not gonna be a concrete driveway. It's gonna be a stone driveway. So you're just gonna hear stone in and out because you can hear it from the corner. It sounds like someone's coming up my driveway, which is long and it's stone, but it's coming from the apartments that are facing Givian. And then you have all the stone out on the road and so on and so forth. So I was just wondering, is there a property management company? Cyclophe fence, nobody wants to see it. Blocks of view. And is there any plan for what it even looks like, looks like? I mean, you know, you only see what it looks like from the area, you know, from air, you know, top down, you don't see the front of it. If it looks like the other one, it definitely looks like an apartment building. It'd be a disguise.
I just wanted to make two comments on that. So, um, I can go away from the fence and do shrubbery and do evergreens or whatnot. The property, the houses, I think it's one of you guys, is right across the street, has evergreens that block the entire property. I can do a similar thing there so that that's not seen from the road, right? And the other thing, as far as property manager, I have property manager that checks on this, this, this facility that I have here. I have great tenants in the current building now because I've done thorough background checks and credit checks, et cetera, so that some of those, and if there is anything going on, any questions, any problems if they have with, like, the septic in the back, I jumped on that and got the whole thing taken care of that was an issue back there. So, so there's a property manager, I can, um, put evergreen there that's similar to the building that's right accro, the house that's across the street from there, so that there is a little bit more privacy. It doesn't break up the unity of what it looks like in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You own the first?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, come up to there. I'm Michael, I'm Michael Brand. I just wanted to ask Mr. Brown a question. Which way is it gonna be facing the road anyway? Is the door is gonna be facing when you ride down and look to your right when you go out or which way?
Long Walnut.
So you mean we're gonna see all these people who are out the house?
Well, up at the, up evergreen, you wouldn't even see them on the driveway.
That's just gonna.
Okay, are you bringing it back, please, Stuart?
And the other question is, I know years ago we had to have another septic dug on our property down in Long Walnut Road. And when you have a prop, when you have the original one and have, you gotta have space for a backup one. So is this, Mr. Brown, gonna have a space to put a backup one if that one ever went bad?
Well, yes, sir, that's, that's part of the Chesapeake Bay regulations and he would need to have a reserved drain field.
Can cars drive on septic?
So if he builds this?
No, they can't. The, the front of the property is, the front of the property is here and the septic is on the backside. So the parking lot, from what I understand, from what Mr., uh, Brown said, would be in the front somewhere. He could put it, I don't think he could put it over the well.
Because I know, I'm not an expert on this, but in the primary and the reserve? So you mean?
Yeah, where's the reserve at?
Yeah, because you gotta have, I, I'm not an expert at this, but I know you have to have two because we had to have it. We had to make a nerve one in ours.
Part of the conditions is that they must abide by the Health Department regulations, so.
Well, a lot of things are supposed to be done by the Health Department regulations and some time don't happen. I don't mean to sit there. That's, that's pretty much, I think, the only thing I had, if somebody else has something to say.
Okay, now, we're, we're gonna go back to the commission, uh, right now, so we're not gonna take any more public comments because that's probably closed. So commission, um, questions? We're talking about how many acres of land?
One acre.
One acre of land.
And four, three bedrooms. Well, septic, it's working.
Okay. If I understand correctly, all the, um, septic, the major septic system is gonna be in the back. And the backup system will be in one corner of the front, which it, it's the top of the map.
That's the well.
Which is in ten feet of the well.
Where, where do you see that? For the, for the reserve.
That's the only place left to put it.
You can't put it that close to the well.
Well, the well is right here.
Yep.
You can't put it within seventy-five feet of the well.
Right.
Right, so if you put it up in the corner next to State Highway seven sixty, which is the top of the screen, I think you'd make the seventy-five foot, wouldn't you?
Well, it's only a hundred and twenty-five feet according to the plan from the road to the, to the buildings. And the well looks to be about in the center. So that's sixty-three and a half, sixty-two and a half feet. That's not seventy-five feet.
I'm looking at the other corner. If you tap the map in the, um, upper right-hand corner.
Oh, I see, I, I'm with you.
I think that would qualify.
But it, it has to be able to perk. And we don't know that.
Uh, no one will get a building permit until they file an approved Virginia Department of Health septic plan, that's it, permit in plan. So that we will not even issue a building permit until we have an approved plan that has a, uh, well and septic and reserved drain field.
I see.
So, uh, I assume that Mr. Brown hasn't done that since because he doesn't want to invest that until he knows he can have the prop, do what he wants to do. But we will not issue a building permit until we have approval from the Virginia Department of Health that everything is in order. And that's one of the requirements for a building permit. So this drawing, I, I assume, is missing some components and will need to be modified, but, uh, it, it's a placeholder for what he plans to do. But this obviously is not, uh, a completed Health Department-approved well and septic plan by Environmental Services.
So if it's not completed, what can we do?
We can put in a suggested condition that, uh, all the permits from the regulatory agencies, such as the Department of Health and the Department of Transportation, shall be obtained.
Permission, any questions?
So we can, um, say, uh, like you were saying, um, we, what I would say is that, um, I would pass it pending he gets everything that is required, all these conditions that are required.
Well, that's, that's what the condition number one says, basically, that if he goes forward, he will have to get these permits from the Health Department and the Department of Transportation.
Guys, I, will the chair hear a motion for the conditions to be modified to include landscaping, suitable landscaping along Walnut Point Road? Don't move.
Uh, Chairman, I'm not sure suitable landscaping is a very, uh, quantifiable term. Phil, do you have any suggestions on how we could word this or would you, how would you like to?
In the past, when that condition has been placed on a project, it is with the intent to screen the property from adjoining properties.
So you say suitable landscaping in order to screen from properties across the road?
Yes, unless we wanted to, unless we asked Mr. Brown to develop a landscape plan, that we would then want to look at proceed.
We're driving furiously.
Well, I just put, uh, uh, Mr. O'Brien asked the chair to, uh, add a condition that would allow suitable landscaping in order to screen the properties from across the road, uh, uh, screen the view of properties across, across the road. How does that sound?
Okay.
I have another question. If you could go back to the plan view drawing, please. You're talking about that reserved place, that's where the parking places are gonna be?
Well, it's gonna be, it's going to have a much smaller parking lot after they put the backup septic system in.
Health Department thing anyway.
Yeah. The Health Department's gonna determine all that.
I mean, if, if it's not adequate, they're not gonna approve it, so it would be moot.
It still has to come back to the commission, right?
No, sir. Uh, the recommendation would be either to the board or, um, uh, to approve it with the conditions or to add a condition and approve it or to recommend not approving it. Because it's advertised for next month at the board meeting. Is that correct, Phil? Yeah, so it's going to the board next month. Uh, it just depends on what you all, whether you want to recommend it or whether you want to recommend it with additional conditions or whether you want to recommend denying it.
I'd like to move that we recommend the additional, um, condition, in addition to the ones already mentioned by building zoning, to encapsulate the wording we've just discussed.
The suitable landscaping in order to screen the view of properties from across the road.
That's correct.
Okay.
So you need a second.
A second.
Okay.
Question?
Tell me what we're, what we're, what we're getting ready to vote on here.
To add a condition of, uh.
Just to add a condition?
An added condition to the suggested conditions, number six, that would say, uh, that the applicant would, would add suitable landscaping in order to screen the view of properties across, I'll put Lone Walnut Road.
So was your motion just to add that condition? It had nothing to do with our recommendation to the board? Is that right, Patrick?
Well, I would go yes, but I would.
We're not at the point where we're gonna vote yes or no on this.
That's right, I got it.
This is just for the condition, right?
Mr. Brian, yes, it was just, just the condition.
So if that's acceptable to everyone?
Well, we need to vote. There's a, first, Mr. Brian made the motion, Ms. Dig seconded, so you need to vote if you want to add that condition.
Fine, if you'd like to add that condition by the usual sign?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Aye, okay, all right, so it passes. So we're adding that condition.
That's all, all aye. Okay.
So. I know that's got your wrong.
Interesting.
I have a comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, before we vote again. While I appreciate what Mr. Brown is trying to do and it's, it's something that would definitely fill up, these folks bought or built their residence surrounded by agricultural land. It's still zoned agricultural. They bought there for a reason. If this land was already zoned for apartments, I'd be totally fine with it, but it's not. It's zoned agricultural. I just don't think that this is the place for another apartment building.
Technically, I believe it's zone R1.
Zone A1.
A1 or R1?
A1.
A1, right?
Yes. Okay. If they would have bought and it was already zoned for apartments, then too bad. But they didn't, they bought. With agricultural land around them, it's obvious that's, the majority of the people that live there wanted to stay and that's what I think should happen.
Mr. Chairman, I also agree with Alan. These homeowners have purchased here and lived here with a certain expectation of privacy with single-family homes on individual lots. They already have one of these units that they're having to deal with. I, I just couldn't be in favor of imposing another one of these on all these residents that have been there for years with that expectation of having a single-family home on that lot and not a four-unit, three-bedroom apartment complex. That's just my idea.
I, I, I tend to agree with that some. First of all, I we've got a lot of folks here that said they, they didn't know anything about it. Now, it's my understanding that this required the adjacent property. Now, it's my understanding that this required the adjacent property owners to be notified.
Yes, sir.
That's Virginia state law.
We weren't required to notify everybody, the whole area, which would have been nice. I think it would have been a good, these folks would have been more informed and I think that would have been good if we'd done that. Right now, we've got the duplexes there, and to put another unit in, the reason the duplexes didn't have to go through a conditional use permit is because the zoning was different at the time that I was putting in. Is that right?
The zoning ordinance changed. In 2003, it was actually allowed by right in properties zoned agricultural.
So we're going to take one acre of property now, which is one acre designed for one unit, and we're going to put four, the equivalent of four, on that piece of property. Looks like we're putting a lot on there. I'd like to see Mr. Brown get something done, but I think, in my opinion, we're trying to do too much of that piece of property. The screening and lighting and the Health Department, I think that, I believe we need to add those, just like Mr. Marston has, I agree with what he's put in. But I feel the same way. I'd have a hard time going with what we've got right now.
I have a really difficult time, sorry, Mr. Brown, but meeting all the conditions you would have to meet on one acre parcel of property, I just don't think it's realistic. And given the, I'm not troubled by the notice requirement because obviously word seems to have gotten out. But, but I think this would reflect, would adversely affect the character of the property, of the neighborhood, if you will. So I'm going to vote against it.
I guess I disagree with everybody. I'm not going to vote against it because I think it should be, if he can get everything approved that's necessary for him to do it, then I don't see any reason why he shouldn't be allowed to at least try to get, to get it done. I mean, they're going to stop him if it's something that can't be done, so I don't think we should be the judge of that.
Heidi, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm wrestling with the fact that our comprehensive plan, one of our goals is affordable housing, and Mr. Brown is trying to provide some degree of affordable housing in the county. And the fact that he does own the land, I am troubled by the fact that it's agriculture and we're trying to put so much on one acre. Quite frankly, I'm torn between, I wonder if there's a compromise of putting less units on the one-acre parcel that might, we might find a way to compromise and make, make it work for the county, for Mr. Brown and the residents.
Okay, so are you asking that question to Mr. Brown?
Yeah, to whoever. I mean, I don't know if we change the nature, or if Mr. Brown changes the nature of his plan, does it have to go back through the public hearing, starting with, you know, step one? Or can it be changed at this time and go forward? And if he'd even be interested in that?
Yes, definitely interested. When I purchased the property, I saw plans for a three-unit building, and that was one of the reasons I went forward. So if we need to downsize a bit, I'm definitely open to that.
Do the numbers work for a three-unit complex? In terms of generating sufficient rental income to justify the project?
Yeah, yeah. I could still make it work with a three-unit building.
I'm willing to make Mr. Brown hold.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I'm willing to make Mr. Brown hold.
You're printing your checkbook.
Well, I am too, but I'm not.
No, I'm planning on seeing Bobby doing a game tomorrow with one of the neighbors. He'll make it hold. I don't wish to hold his name.
I don't think anybody does.
He's part of the law, he's very gracious in that problem. He bought it as what he was and built what he was brought. I don't think he's right to change it in the middle after everybody else has done the right thing to do the wrong thing. That's my opinion, sir.
So, your wishes to the commission?
I make a motion that we recommend denial of this project based on comments from the audience and based on comments from other members of the commission. That's my motion.
Can I make a counter motion? I think.
I think you need to vote on that one first.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that is if that, this can be worked out through the satisfaction of the parties, all the parties concerned, which might include a purchase back of the existing one-acre parcel, I think we ought to give the parties, all interested parties, some sort of extension to see if that's possible before we take the final recognition vote to the Board of Supervisors.
Well, my recommendation is for four units. If at some point in time, the neighbors and Mr. Brown could get together and come up with maybe a duplex or something like that, that can happen down the road. But as far as approving what he's asked for now, I recommend that we deny that.
And I'm asking if we can hold off the vote for thirty days.
We still need to vote on this one, we have the other. I'm going to second his motion.
Okay, so the motion has been seconded. Any questions? I know, you have a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's take a count.
I didn't get that.
Okay.
Mr. McKinley, aye. Mr. Williams, aye.
O'Brien, no.
Garland, aye.
No.
Aye.
Heidi, how do you vote?
I didn't think I was allowed to vote over Zoom.
Yes, yes, ma'am. We voted you and allowed you to participate. We have a quorum, so yes, ma'am, you are a full member.
Oh, okay, good. I would have to vote, aye, to deny it as it stands, as it's been submitted, if that's the motion. I think that's what I understood.
Okay, just to be clear, Mr. McKinley, aye. Mr. Williams, aye. Mr. O'Brien, nay. Mr. Garland, nay.
No. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Garland is aye. Mr. Parker, did you vote? Aye. Ms. Diggs, aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Sorry, I was trying to write.
Good thing you went back in check again.
Ms. Wilkins, aye. Aye.
Correct.
All right, we're past that. Hopefully, something can be worked out amongst the parties. Because you're talking about one acre, and that can be crowded. So I'm hoping that you can come together and figure out something with this.
Mr. Marston, do you have any comments or?
I mean, I think we needed to act on the application in front of us, prior to modifications being made, unless, unless we're requesting specific modifications to this application. And at that point, we would need to re-advertise.
So we're good and Mr. Brown can work with you and the board on modifying it before? Or is it still?
We're still going to be, this is still what's advertised, and this is going to be what goes before the Board of Supervisors unless Mr. Brown wants to make proffers prior to that hearing.
That'll be up to Mr. Brown to make that modification, then he can get together with you.
Yes.
Okay, all right. If you're willing to do that. All right? Okay, all right. I'll let Stuart do that. Can you tell us where we ended up? We ended up acting, denying the current proposal.
There was a motion by Mr. McKinley recommending denial based on the comments of the audience. And his recommendation is about what has been applied for, which is four units. It was seconded by Mr. Garland, and the votes were one, two, three, four, five, aye to recommend denial, and two votes to, to, to not recommend denial. So the ayes have it. So the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is to recommend denial of this application.
Point of order, did that vote that we just took include the new condition with screening or not?
If it's denied, the conditions are moved? Or I'm.
I mean, the conditions are still going to accompany the application to the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
And the commission did vote on adding that condition, so I will be adding that condition to go before the board.
We voted on that.
Yeah, I apologize. I apologize. I was wanting to be clear.
So just to clear that up, I know it's a little bit confusing. Our job as the Planning Commission is to make recommendations to the board. The board always has the final say.
The board has the power. We are just an advisory committee, commission. So we just recommend, and the board is actually the ones that take action and have the power to do that. So there's another step that's been advertised as well, and that'll be on.
March thirteenth?
March thirteenth, second Thursday of the month, at 7:00 PM in this building, right here. And you're welcome to talk to your Board of Supervisor member, Mr. Brand, as well. You'll be able to say whatever, the same sort of thing at the board meeting, just like tonight. And, but like I said, we're just recommending denial. The board will actually make a decision, either for or against. And you will be able to speak your mind, just like you did tonight.
Right. Stuart?
No, ma'am, all the, all the comments that I received will be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors, and I have public comments from Michael D. Brand, Susan M. Ah, Todd Melissa Lewis, and Roger Worth. I'm sorry, Robert Worth. Well, that'll be in the minutes of the Planning Commission. But I encourage you to come and speak. Letters are fine, but seeing somebody in person is, you know, it's always good to be able to reiterate your case to the board. But they will make a decision, and their decision will be final.
So all you voted on at this point is this particular proposal?
Is the four units and the application that we're requesting to the board deny this. It's a two-step process. This is the preliminary, and then the final is when the board meets.
But if you ask the parts that include the reclamation of the four plants, three units or whatever, and the issues with the septic system and the dwelling and all of that stuff, that is not in a final place yet, right?
If he changes his plan, he has to go back through the whole, through the process again. Am I right to say that?
Yeah.
But it will be his responsibility to present to the board that he has qualified in all of those respects. It's on Mr. Brown to prove to the Board of Supervisors. You can do all those things, just so you know.
Okay, we thank you for your comments. We thank you for your interest, and we hope that you can work on something with Mr. Brown to have a harmonious results. So thank you very much for coming tonight. Well, that's cool. All right?
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. All right.
That's strange, because Nassau really got a big reputation. For years, it's been totally mucked up.
Okay, we'll take a look at our present draft, 2024 end-of-year report.
Yes, sir. I gave, put hard copies out for y'all to look at. I also sent it to you by email. I'll be glad to go through it. I know y'all probably don't want me to read it word by word, but we'll hit the highlights. Basically, the first part of the end report, end of the year report, talks about the actions of the Planning Commission. And I know y'all love this, but remember, we worked on the boathouse ordinance to allow boat canopies. That was early in the year. The Board of Supervisors requested the commission review the zoning ordinances, all the uses within the zoning ordinance, to see if they should be allowed by right, conditional or not at all. And we reviewed those. Result of that zoning ordinance, we noted that office buildings were a by right in R1 and R2, and did not think that was right. So we suggested change office buildings to be a conditional use in R1 and R2 to allow citizens to be able to object or let their feelings be known if there was office build proposed next door to them. We revised the solar energy facility ordinance to increase the setback from 25 to 50 feet so that they could put the vegetated, vegetated filter strips in the front. To revise the decommissioning plan review, the first one for two years after completion, and then every five years. And that state that if the decommissioning plan increased costs, that we would increase, they would increase the surety, decommissioning surety by the same amount. We also looked at a one-mile prohibition of utility-scale solar energy facility from tidal waters, and ended up past, or suggesting a point, three-quarter mile, 0.75 prohibition from tidal waters. And there were no resignings last year. The Planning Commission held a capital improvement plan, public hearing on April 18th, and sent it to the Board of Supervisors for adoption. Of course, a subcommittee worked on that as well. Another public hearing was Roger Evans had a conditional use permit to allow construction of a boathouse on his property at 485 Clark Lane. And the reason it was a conditional use permit, because there was an objection, and we recommended to approve that. that, and accreted by, this was very recently, Mr. Cottle for a conditional use permit for the small retail furniture repair shop at two eight two nine Northumberland Highway. Explained about the business license exercise and analysis that we looked through, that came out about from the comprehensive plan revision, and that we told the board that the planning commission did not think we needed a business license after we found out there was a list of businesses in the county from Commissioner Revenue. There was a memo from the board of supervisors regarding cargo containers, and we passed a suggested condition that any storage container that is visible from the road or neighbor's property must be painted in to blend with existing scenery or establish natural vegetated screen to hide the unit so it's significantly less visible. And then we worked on the comp plan, one through four, in two thousand and five, and we'll continue to do that. The board requests, if you look, it's a table from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, and the, there was one boathouse request by the board of supervisors, one Chesapeake Bay Act variance, eleven conditional uses, fifty-four wetland board application, and five zoning variances that the BZA handled. But, so that's sort of the board requests, and what we did, and next is more about what is being constructed in the county. In twenty twenty-four, the estimated cost of construction was sixty-five million, six-hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents, compared to fifty-nine million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three and forty-five cents for two thousand and twenty-three. This is an increase of approximately nine point five percent from two thousand and three to two thousand and four, so we're moving in the right direction. There's a chart that shows that after that, and then there's a comparison of structures that compares twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. They, there were, in twenty twenty-three, there were fifty-four single-family dwellings, and twenty twenty-four, there were seventy-two, which is a twenty-eight point six percent difference. There were seventeen modulars in twenty twenty-three, and fifteen in twenty twenty-four, eight double wides in twenty twenty-three, and seven in twenty twenty-four, and mobile homes, there were seven in twenty twenty-three, and nine in twenty twenty-four. The commercial is kind of hard to explain, but basically, there is a lot of commercial remodel repair, and that's what the asterisk denotes. There's notes underneath that table that basically says the estimates for commercial remodel repair. This only shows new buildings and new construction, so there is a good chunk of remodel repair that's done in commercials, so we wanted to show that, that there is being investments in the businesses, but not really new buildings being built, but existing buildings being modified. So in twenty twenty-four, it was five hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred, and it was down from a million eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seven in twenty twenty-three, which is a decrease of sixty-two point eight percent. So the total commercial investment in twenty twenty-four was fifty-seven, five hundred seventy-three hundred thousand compared to total commercial investment in twenty twenty-three of two million, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, and nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-one, a decrease of one hundred and thirty-five point five percent. The reason these large decreases is that we included in last month, last year's report, the American Rescue and Protection Act, ARPA money, that we used to upgrade the sewage treatment plant, and we deemed that commercial, so it's basically some of the infusion of federal money that was from COVID, that is no longer, we're no longer getting that COVID money anymore. That's one of the reasons the numbers went down. So I wouldn't, it is very hard to measure the commercial when you're just looking at remodel repair, but if you have any questions, I'll try my best to answer it. But it did go down, and, but it's hard to, I mean, it's, it's improving of existing buildings, but it's paltry compared to new construction. And then it splits out, and I don't know if y'all need to know this, and I'm not sure if you even know the magistrateal districts, but it just shows a breakdown of the different dwellings in the different districts. Fairfield is the Reevesville area, and Heesville is, of course, the Heesville area. Lottsburg is upper part of the county, and Wacomico is sort of the middle part of the county. But if you add up all the dwelling modular homes, double wides, mobile homes, and commercials, there were a hundred and five new constructions in the county. Again, another breakdown is by zoning district. So agricultural, there were twenty-eight dwellings, I'm sorry, twenty-eight new constructions, which consisted of dwellings, modular homes, and mobile homes, and double wides and commercial. There were a total of two in R2, there were seventy-two in residential waterfront, which makes sense. The two, A1 was the majority of the county, had twenty-eight, and the residential waterfront, which is our prime building areas, is seventy-two, so that makes up a hundred out of a hundred and five. There was one in residential restricted R3, and two in R4, but like I mentioned, the majority is in A1, which is the majority of the county, or R2, which is along the waterfront. And nothing was built in this year in conservation, business general, or industrial life. The permits and inspections, there were six boathouse applications, like I said, seven double wides, and we did, the building and zoning office did four hundred and sixty-one electrical permits, two hundred and sixty-two lane disturbing inspections, issued one hundred and sixty-five lane disturbing permits, issued three hundred and fifteen mechanical permits, mobile homes were nine, modular homes were fifteen, private pier applications were a hundred and eighty-eight, a hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, eighty-eight private piers, and a hundred and eighty-eight plumbing permits, and seventy-two single-family dwellings, as I mentioned before, and issued five hundred and ninety-six zoning permits. You need a zoning permit to put a deck on, a shed, addition, a new construction, so that's why there's that many of the zoning permits. The final section just shows which, where the boathouses and private piers were constructed. There are six boathouses constructed in the county, and you can see the breakdown there. In the Potomac River, there were thirty-five private piers, and on the Chesapeake Bay, there were thirty-three private piers, so that's about equal. And the wetland applications permitted, these could be shoreline protection permits, these could be oyster float permits, these could be osprey poles, rift raft drawings, whatever you could say, but anything that impacts state bottoms, and there were twenty-two in the Potomac River, and, there you go, twenty-six in the Chesapeake Bay. So all in all, I mean, we're, increase in construction, the bottom line is a nine-point five percent increase from last year, which means we're going in the right direction. Of course, commercial, would be nice to have more commercial, but we're working on that. Any questions?
Stuart, should we say something in here about the Hampton Hall project?
I believe I'm, I think I had something in there. I might, well, maybe I left it out. Let me check. Yes, sir, I will add that. I'm sorry, I thought I put that in other considerations, but, yes, sir, I will put that in there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Where is the Hampton Hall project?
Hampton Hall Landing, it's been owned by the county for hundreds of years, when they, when they.
Right at the Hampton Hall Bridge?
Yes, ma'am. And when they built the bridge, they moved it over, and there was some remaining land that VDOT gave to the county. I think it's about five, three point six nine acres, about an acre of that is wetlands, and we're going to create a waterfront park. The board of supervisors would like to create a waterfront park there. The first thing we want to do is get access and a road in there and some parking, and then we'll decide whether we want to make it just picnic tables.
On the right hand side, on two oh two, before you hit the bridge. Okay. I want to be drawn.
The county's owned it for hundreds of years, is the way I understand it.
What did you do wrong?
I know you sold some of the land to the county, I understand that, yeah.
So particularly, y'all can do this fine, though.
Well, when I got here, we wanted to do something.
Start.
I said, when I got here, we, I tried to get something, that was when they were replacing the bridge. I contacted VDOT and asked them that they would leave part of the bridge so they could have a fishing pier, but.
It's not a great place for boats, but it would be still wonderful for kayaks and boaters.
About two and a half feet of water, yes, ma'am, and that's.
On that bridge, up in that water?
Yes, ma'am, and Ken Sails just around the corner. Ken Sails, about three-quarters of a mile around the corner, if you paddle over there. Yes, ma'am, we're pursuing that, and if you go by there, you'll see that the land has been cleared, and a gate has been put up, and.
It's planned already?
Yes, ma'am, but it's not ready for use right now. We're working on getting the design to put an entrance in and pave the road, and then we will have an official opening.
Okay, and let me tell you something, in case you don't know, the young Mr. Smith that has an auction club business, he has these mechanisms that have kayaks and things inside, and you use your credit card and get your kayak, and your life preserver and everything.
Yeah, I've seen him in the marnik at the park.
Yeah, so you might want to put a few of those down there.
That would be up to the board of supervisors, but we can, you know, that's, that's something they can decide.
And I know when it's going to be completed?
We hope to do it this year.
Good.
We just need a big public donation.
I'm sorry?
We need a big public donation.
I tell you what, I'm just so tickled, finally going to do it, because people need a place to go.
Did you bring your checkbook?
Bring your checkbook.
Well, I don't have any money, but I have friends who do. So I'll ask for some donations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for so expensive, though, to do a kayak canoe landing.
You'd be surprised, yeah.
When I sold it to Northumberland County, it was clear, ready to go with a kayak.
Things grow.
Yeah, yeah. It either grows up or falls down.
Okay.
Well, I'm proud of it, thank you. And I'd like to say something to you tonight, I think what you did for that young man was good, because you can't put that many people on one acre land if you work. You made a wonderful, but let me tell you something else, now, always remember, when you put a bubble around a rock, you have created where he cannot see. I have a lot of minors living in these homes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Would it please the board if we pushed number two under the working session items to our next meeting?
That would be fine.
Does it please the board?
Sounds good.
All right, that's what we do.
Please, this number.
That's what we do. Okay, there are no discussion items. Stuart, could we have a board of supervisors report?
I'm trying to remember, I went to it.
Tell us what you remember.
I don't, I have had a lot going on in my life right now.
Please write down five things you did this week.
I did not vote for you, I'm not.
Expectancy in the school board.
If you bear with me one moment, I will refresh my memory.
Okay.
Be careful there, Stuart.
The chance he succeeds in that regard, I think we'll, the chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's right, that's right.
Stuart's still thinking.
Yeah, he's thinking, and a little under the weather.
I'm sorry, I just had a brain fart, I apologize. The last meeting, we, of course, had the Westmoreland Players' Conditionally Used to Modify the Condition for the Size of the Sign, and, and that, and they passed that, they passed it to allow them to put the sign up, considering there was the evergreen vegetation that was between the house that was next to it. And then they also considered amendment to the Northumberland County Code to, that tax relief for elderly and disabled persons to increase the total combined income to not exceed twenty-eight thousand, and that total annual exemption shall not exceed six hundred dollars. There was some discussion if that was enough relief for elderly and disabled persons, and the Commissioner of Revenue, Mr. Thomas, said that he had surveyed the other counties, and it's not meant to pay all the property taxes, just to provide a little bit of a break to them, and he felt it was in line, so the board would have had to pass that, as it is, twenty-eight thousand, upper limit, and annual exemption not to exceed six hundred dollars.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, I've heard from, I've heard from Miss Patsy, okay. Any comments from the board? Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, you stand, you stand adjourned.